Okay, if you can stand with me, the student council is gonna come up over to this at the ledge.
Of course.
By roll call this evening, we have four members present, we are missing Mr. Bowers tonight. Upcoming board meetings, May 16th, we have a public work session at the administration office at 6:00 PM. May 20th will be a regular meeting at Akron Elementary at 6:00 PM. June 13th will be another public work session at the administration office at 6:00 PM. June 17th will be a regular meeting at Mentone Elementary at 6:00 PM. July 11th will be a public work session at the administration office. July 15th will be a regular meeting at Mentone Elementary at 6:00 PM. We'll now move on to Spotlight on the Valley, number one, welcome and introduction of new employees.
I don't believe we have any new employees here this evening, so we'll move on to recognizing the Donors Choose. A couple of Donors Choose grants will be accepted later in the agenda. Kathy Olson, would you like to talk about your one Donors Choose project?
I'll actually talk about both of them tonight, because I'm representing Kyler tonight out of the middle school. The Donors Choose item for the sensory box, I have some students that have sensory needs, like squishy type balls or balls that are ridged, and if they hold those while they're doing reading or another activity, it helps to calm them and then they can do their reading. Kyler's project was for wrestling gear, he got headgear and knee pads for his wrestlers. A lot of times, some of his students can't afford to pay for those items and the school doesn't have enough of those. So, we created a project so that any student that wanted to participate in wrestling this year would have the gear that they needed, even if they couldn't afford to pay for it themselves. And then, next year, we're hoping, he needs to get some new wrestling shoes to help just enhance his program there at the middle school, so we're looking forward to that next year.
Thank you Kathy for all your work in Kyler too. Spotlight on Mentone, Dom.
Yes, hi, I'm Randy Dom, I'm the principal here at Mentone. Seen a lot of bulldogs out in the crowd, it's good to see all of you. We have a few groups we'd like to recognize this evening, and we're going to start with our student council. And so, this is Ron from the student council, go ahead, come on up.
We'll be there in just a sec. Come here, sir. Okay, I would like my readers to come up. Okay, we have been very busy at Mentone School this year, our student council has done a lot of things. And we're gonna, each person's gonna speak for just a short time and tell you some of the things, and then we're gonna recognize all of our, all of our members. Okay guys?
Election of Officer Test was held. Nash Bows was elected president. Brady Morton was elected vice president. And Daylon Buzzer was elected secretary. We had a state district leadership workshop. We were again and again planning for a health therapy. We were going in, calling, taking.
Okay, just have a seat. Guys, get a little closer to the microphone there.
Our student council at Mentone School campaigned.
Come a little closer, there you go.
Campaign for student council. Jeff and Andrew were selected from each third fourth unit. Great last one. Three other student representatives were also added because they attended future camp at Manchester University. Last September, the 2017-2018 student council was organized as being a gold honored council by the Indiana Constitution of Students. September, student council met and talked about our goals and projects for the 2018, I mean, 2018-2019 school year. We agreed that we wanted to work to make Mentone School a kinder place for all students. Veterans were encouraged to work for us.
In November, we honored our extra support staff during American education. Student council led the practical units during Mentone's was veterans' day. We visited Helping Hands in Halloweek, we drove for Helping Hands. We also decorated cookies and treated the classes that had the best participation in the food drive. We made Christmas decorations with a tree we entered in the mess hall chamber of the Marquis' House. Here proceeds festival tours.
It's different that this is tree that we entered in the festival of trees for first place. We received $100 for first place. The tree was auctioned for $40. The $40 was given to Helping Hands. We decided to sell cookies to have a Dar Wars to raise money for Riley Children's Hospital. They also began a discussion about adding a kindness wall of faith. January, we took orders to save hundreds of states. We have a spirit name for a hundred state school. We also wanted to sell antique candles for a school-wide fundraiser. Lots of chance was spent training the health fair. Student council will present a good on stress. Posters and flowers were made for mental.
January, we placed a spirit of reading function in the community. Individuality was conceived. We will have a special day time during the holidays. The other day, coin wars, which will be marched for April. The health fair was rescheduled someday due to weather.
Watch the candy sales change to pretzels. We bagged pretzels and delivered them. The candles were also delivered. Coin wars were huge success. We raised $2,400 for writing. The pretzel sales brought in about $600. We used our $100 price money for Christmas and donated $2,500 to Rely for research. The money was matched, Caitlin presented our $600 to our new radio days. That $600 was also matched. Camp registration were passed out. We served pizza to Mrs. Parker's kindergarten class for selling the most in our antique room. Second grade is planning a swimming party for raising the most money in quarters. Student council treated fourth grade to an ice cream, ice cream party. For being second place, they were given pretzels to kindergarten for being.
April, we are planning to honor our teachers for teacher appreciation day. For April and May, we are working on spreading kindness. Each classroom has a jar for students to recognize the kindness of others. They will be added to a kindness wall of faith. We are also getting ready for the health fair, which is rescheduled to May 7.
Hey, look me in the head. We will be recognized by Riley Children's Hospital on May 3rd. Their representative will come to Mentone School represent us with a Riley license plate versus a copy of the Riley wagon. We raised money for this year. We will be adding names of our kindness wall of faith to recognize the kindness spirit of students at Mentone. We plan to continue our kindness campaign into next year. The health fair will be held on May 17th. We will be sending preschools leadership camp at Manchester University in Todd to a council ending year with this celebration.
Yeah, I would like to recognize our student council representatives at this time. And that's what I was gonna say. First is Nash Bows, our president. Brady Morarty is our vice president. Daylon Buzzer is our secretary. William Alott. Jasmine Fuller. I stand up, turn around, please. Isaiah Holt. Harvey Hayes. Caitlin Throckel. Guys, if you're in the audience, come on up, please. William Alott. Riley Thompson. Parker Adamson. Harrington Kraft. Brayden Knoll. Kelly Pope. Darren Winnie. This is right out to the. Carter Vanusman. There's a couple others who aren't here, I'd like to think a couple of these kids who just, oh, Ripley, sorry. My own Ripley Wright in my own class, sorry about that. Ripley Wright. A couple of these kids stepped in tonight when somebody wasn't gonna be here just as. They stepped in, but they kinda gave you just a little mirror of what we've done this year. And I just wanna say that they worked really hard. And I feel like this has been a great year for student council, but we have a lot of staff in the building, the teachers have helped a lot, our administrators, our kitchen staff have helped, our office staff, so a lot of people have done this. But most of all, we have a lot of parents who get up early and bring their kids. But every child in this school, we've had fundraisers, the little kids who run in their pennies for Dar Wars. It's the spirit of Mentone School. These are our leaders who led it, but it's the spirit of Mentone School. So ladies and gentlemen, this is our student council, and also give a round of applause just for our kids at Mentone School.
I would like to introduce our spell pool, and so, this is Sellers, this is Cody, you guys, please come up. Now, spell pool took place, I wanna say in the fall, where it was a little exciting as due to weather conditions, we made some changes and things, but, well, this is Cody, this is Sellers, talk about that, so.
So, we have spell pool in the fall, it runs, we start right after the school starts, and then we run till almost Thanksgiving. And this year, our competition that is hosted at Wabash, we actually were in the middle of an ice storm during our competition, and Wabash didn't have an alternative date, so our competition was just completely canceled. And we were upset about it, kind of, it was a bummer to work so hard. We had had one practice competition against Akron, but otherwise the kids were just, that was gonna be the end of it. So, we emailed with some of the other schools, and we set up to have a competition here at Mentone. We were able to host that, so we had our own competition here, and we came in third with that. So they worked really hard, and it ended up being pushed back a few weeks, so they had to study extra long and remember their work. So they did a great job for that. Tonight, we have Harvey Hayes with us, Christian Del Rio, Lindsay Peterson, and, sorry, Diane Bradley. Remember last name. And that competition that we hosted here, Christian had a perfect round, so he spelled all seven words correctly. And Lindsay had a near-perfect round, so she spelled six out of seven words correct. So, congratulations. I can't read the rest of her names since we're on our team. We have Bailey Anderson, Haley Borza, Diane Bradley, Christian Del Rio, Harvey Hayes, Naomi Ortiz, Lindsay Peterson, Michaela Smith, and Brooklyn White. All did a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies, appreciate that. Ms. Bedley's here, and she took over the math class for Mrs. Wyatt. I don't think she knew that public speaking was part of the job, but here you go, rookie, no, just kidding. But Ms. Bedley went ahead and ran our math class, and so Ms. Bedley, can you talk about that and do something?
Well, if you were part of math, you can come on up. I was math team coach for 2019, like with spell pool, we had some weather concerns. Unfortunately, our kids missed a lot of practices due to cold weather, snow weather, ice weather. But even so, they worked really hard and they practiced a lot. The kids that were on our team, we had our fourth grade team, which was Cadell Richards, Bailey Anderson, Caitlin Throckel, Michael Samuels, Aiden Bowers, Christian Del Rio, Luis Nunez, Kaiser Hughes, Caitlin Eastgate, Snec Valades, Alczena Nunez, and Jacob Bradley. And then our fifth grade team was Landon Patrick, Lindsay Peterson, William Alott, Naomi Ortiz, Mason Fincher, Harvey Hayes, Haley Borza, Ariana Francis, Leela Elkin, Daylon Buzzer, Jason Gardner, and Will Kelly. So we took these two teams to Wabash, and we competed against several other teams in our regions. In that competition, our fifth grade team placed second place, and our fourth grade team placed first place in the region. And then, all of those scores were compiled with everyone else from the rest of the state. And our fourth grade team came in 40th place, and the entire state in fourth grade, and fifth grade came in 15th place out of the state. So despite all of those practices being canceled, they still did an excellent job, so let's thank them for their performance.
All right, I'd like to recognize a few more students. Just recently, our students took the I Read 3. And we actually had four students who got a perfect score. That means they didn't miss any problems or any questions in I Read 3. So, if you're here, the following students would come up. Kindly Craft, if you're here. Carter Pearson, if you're here. Dirks Miller. You're here, Dirks. And Trinity Kinzinger, Trinity is through here. All right, let's do these more students. You did really better than perfect, so congratulations. Thank you so much for coming. Also, I have to recognize our spelling bee winner, Harvey Hayes. I saw you earlier, it's Harvey, I think that's you. Congratulations, Mentones, spelling bee, excellent job, students, good job. All right, I just wanted to share a real brief presentation here with the Jordan things, and for parents, Mentone moving forward. I wrote down what I had wrote down letter grades in the past and things, here at Mentone, and just kinda wrote kinda the cumulative running for the record and things. 2014, 2015 was an unusual year, in that the state, we had had a B, scored a C, but the state said that the letter grades were identified as inaccurate. There were a lot of things going on at the state level at that time, and so they kinda froze us. So we didn't technically get a B that year. 2016, '17, we got an A. 2017, '18, just recently, we didn't score a C. Now, I felt bad about that, because one of the reasons, I would think, was the testing form I did change for us here at Valley, and students had to type. And we had not went over typing as much as we probably should've. And so that was one thing, just in terms of test-taking skills, something that we learned from there, specifically me. So we are working, if students complain about typing during computer lab class and things, we're doing that and getting as much practice as possible, just so students, because in their testing, they do need to type and things. So I think that was one, definitely one of the reasons. This year, we're taking a new test, not I Step. You know, for the last 20 years of my tenure, I've been so angry with I Step, I Step, now it's I Learn. And so, that will be a new test that we're across the state. So action steps taken this year, just a few things that we've done here. Structural expectations will continue to be clarified and monitored, those are important. Our staffs have left computer free observations, and have gained a lot of knowledge just from each other. Kindergarteners were behind their curriculum. Third grades implemented, worked really hard, implemented guided reading groups. We've been intentional about teaching typing, and emphasizing during students' computer lab time, preparing students also for the new format for the test that will be taken here next week. Also, we continue to tighten curriculum maps, standard-based report cards, that's disparate from ours. The more clear we are about essential standards what we're teaching, the more intentional our instruction will be. So that's very important, seminar school, that's what we're trying to do. So results, just of some of the grade level teams, and so, here at Mentone, we use a lot of what we call formative assessment data. And that's when teachers will go ahead, they'll test students in the essential standard, they'll get a baseline of what's that you spell, and then they teach from there. So for example, in kindergarten, we started the year with 17% of our kindergarten students know the letters and sounds. In March, we're now at 95%. So that was one stat from kindergarten data. We move on then, first grade, and it's kinda hard to see, I didn't know how it'd show up on a big screen here, but we have a lot of different groupings that you'll see really starting to take place, in terms of, what are some of the essential standards, and things like subtraction, things like addition, things of that nature. Again, these are things that are used for any success hours here. We actually have a scheduled time where students do interventions, and if they met that particular standard, they're rich. But we take that 30 minutes, 35 minutes, where we don't do anything new, we go back and really hit some of those, what we call power standards, those things that kids really need to know during that time. We go into second grade then, second grade, just another example of pre-test, post-test. We're keeping track of a lot of this on Excel. Due to confidentiality, we had to cut some of this out just because we don't have student names and things like that. But that gives you another point, just in terms of what we're looking at, and bottom line purposes, what we're really looking at, here are the essential, the most important things, what do kids need to know, not only for their grade level, like for example, second grade, but what do those kids need to know in third grade? What do they need to know in fourth grade? And so really picking out those things, we fill out the most important things, along with our partners from Akron, and then really assessing those things and reteaching when necessary. Third grade, when we move forward, actually, you can see, at the very top, it's kinda boring and things, but just kinda the state standard, and then just how our kids are doing, in terms of when we test them first, and then we do some intervention, and you can see some scores starting to change from there. Fourth grade, kinda the same thing, here's an assessment where you can see, right at first, here's how they're doing at the beginning. Here's the second assessment, the kids who were re-taught, and then actually the third assessment. This was division, so that was one that's really, really important for students going into fifth grade. And then fifth grade, we got just a variety of data points and things. This particular standard was selecting, was selecting add and subtraction corrections with unlike denominators. And you can see all the pre-test, post-test data, as our fifth grade teachers have broken them down by classes, putting kids in bar graphs and doing that. And that's with every standard that we do in terms of this essential. So that's how we track that in fifth grade. So where does Mentone go next? What's the future direction look like? Few goals for next year, we're intentionally including writing across the curriculum, making sure students are used to reading and then responding in writing, that's very, very important. Utilizing our curriculum, retesting results in a more beautiful way, and things, making sure that when we've identified, you know, broad type kinds of things, breaking that down more to individual students and classes and kids. Technology will be upgraded at Mentone this summer, and so we're excited about that, as things will be more visual for our students. Teachers will, we're working on them, we've trained a few teachers for P L T W E learners, and so we'd like to make sure science grade will be strong, we'll continue to improve that. Continue to refine our P L C process, we have robotics program, we had some kids to participate in that in the fall. We're trying to build that up right now on things, along with our chess club and things. So that's something we'll continue to build up, and then just continue to talk about grade level expectations, vertical alignment, report card assessments, et cetera. I think that's about it, in terms of just general statements. Thank you all for coming, we really appreciate it. Mr. Collins?
And Mr. Dom's, I'd like to ask Tiny Brian, who's our director of curriculum, to talk about the teacher of the year recognition.
Motivation in and outside of the classroom that embodies life long learning. The four teachers of the year are also ones who express themselves in an engaging and articulate way. The building teachers of the year were selected last fall. Each candidate was then invited to complete a portfolio in accordance with the Indiana Teacher of the Year Portfolio Guidelines. Portfolio submission was a requirement to be considered for selection of to become Valley School Corporation Teacher of the Year. Submitted portfolios were then evaluated by a committee comprised of a staff member from each school, an administrator, a school board member, and a community member. Using the rubric established by the Indiana Teacher of the Year Program, scores were determined for each portfolio. The candidate with the portfolio receiving the highest cumulative score has been selected as 2019 to become Valley School Corporation Teacher of the Year. Here's our portfolio, will be submitted to the Indiana Department of Education this summer. As you know or she, will be our nominee for the Indiana State Teacher of the Year. I would first like to thank our portfolio evaluators who spent several hours reading and reviewing each portfolio. If you are here this evening, please stand where I call your name, so that you may be acknowledged. Thank you, Hillary Parker from Akron Elementary. Pam Sellers from Mentone Elementary. Lada Studebaker from Tippecanoe Valley Middle School. Shelley Engel from Tippecanoe Valley High School. Chrissy Mills, administrator from Akron Elementary School. Butch Trope, our community member. And Lacy Wise, a member of the Board of Directors. Your great work is appreciated. And now, I would like to recognize our four building teachers of the year. As I call each teacher of the year, I ask that he or she come forward to receive a plaque and the congratulations from the school board and superintendent. And teachers, I'm going to call your name in alphabetical order. So please join me in congratulating Nikki Early, sixth grade social studies teacher and teacher of the year for Tippecanoe Valley Middle School. Lacy Jones, special education teacher and Teacher of the Year for Mentone Elementary School. Andrea Michael, grade twelve librarian and Teacher of the Year for Akron Elementary School. Christopher Walker, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade English teacher and Teacher of the Year for Tippecanoe Valley High School. You are all going to be invited to attend a short reception to honor our four Teachers of the Year immediately following this evening's school board meeting. You can see the things in the back of the cafeteria. And that will give you an opportunity to congratulate these four outstanding educators. And you can view their portfolios, which are on the table back there. It is now my great honor to reveal the name of Tippecanoe Valley School Corporation Teacher of the Year. The district's Teacher of the Year will receive a plaque and a marble apple. The teacher's portfolio will be submitted to the Indiana Department of Education. And this person will be our nominee for the two thousand twenty Indiana State Teacher of the Year. Three building Teachers of the Year submitted portfolios to be considered as the Corporation Teacher of the Year. All of the submissions were outstanding. I'm glad I wasn't on the evaluation. The teacher who was selected made the following statement in the portfolio. "A central tenet of the professional learning communities, the P L C model, is that all means all. The underlying assumption of this phrase is that students should be guaranteed high standards for all of their classes and all students have access to a sound education. However, this idea of all means all transcends planning and implementing a sound curriculum, which has become a given for most teachers in the state. Truly, students deserve to be given a chance in many more avenues than public education provides. We need everyone on the bus. And as we redouble our efforts to include everyone, we need policymakers, administrators, and parents to join the students and teachers on our journey to include everyone." Please join me in congratulating Mr. Christopher Walker, two thousand nine.
We have just a few comments. We recognize four teachers tonight. Those are hard decisions to make within buildings, because we've got a lot of great teachers at Tippecanoe Valley. I mean, the heart that they show for our students and our community, we just, we appreciate that so much. Mrs. Grimes, in her position, she was hired last summer, I think in June. And just to kind of give some background on this, she was a teacher and a principal up in South Bend. But as an elementary school teacher, she was the South Bend teacher, South Bend Community School Corporation Teacher of the Year. And then that same year, she was the Indiana State Teacher of the Year. When was that? Two thousand nine. So when she came on, this was one of the initiatives that she brought up. And I can't tell you how much, and speaking on behalf of the board, too, how much we appreciate the time and effort that you've put into organizing this and recognizing our teachers. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Downs, seven. Okay, great. Student reports?
All spring sports are going well, and seniors are taking a trip to D.C. this week. And last week, student council sent students to a rep assembly. And also, the livestock team was second out of twenty-four teams. And the people on that team were Shaylee Shriver, Sarah Tucker, Sidney Peterson, and Mallory Bowers.
And then district leadership contest and FFA's this Thursday, and twenty-two kids are going on that. The academic team has a competition tomorrow night. Last Saturday was a coding competition, which it went okay. And then Jeremy Gagnon and I completed in the state voting competition.
Great job, guys. Appreciate the updates and all the effort that everybody's providing there at the high school. Good job. So that's everything for Spotlight. If you'd like to close the Spotlight on the Valley, we will now move into the visiting portion of the meeting. Any items from the visitors this evening that would like to speak to the board? All right. We're going to move on to the approval of the consil agenda. If any kids want to leave, you're welcome to leave. We'll move on to the consil agenda. Number one, approve the minutes of March fourteenth, twenty nineteen executive session. Number two, approve the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty nineteen regular meeting. Number three, approve the minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen executive session. Number four, approve the hiring of following personnel. Toriattic, Usman Ifaka, instructional assistant, Akron Elementary. Adaza Foster, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary. Katrina Swihart, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary. Alyssa Chinski, instructional assistant, Mentone Elementary. Estelle Nediff, historian, Mentone Elementary. Number five, accept the resignation of following personnel. Kathy McCrone, historian, Mentone Elementary. Laura Mash, head cook at middle school. Maria Quintan, historian at the middle school. Alyssa Trupidi, assistant girls' basketball coach at the high school. Alyssa Trupidi, math teacher at the high school. Number six, accept the retirement of the following personnel. Ray Shira, physical education teacher at the high school. Number seven, approve the overnight field trip for the high school volleyball team. Number eight, approve the overnight field trip for the World Food Prize conference. Number nine, approve the out-of-state professional leave. Number ten, approve the out-of-state field trip for the high school arts club. Number eleven, approve the twenty nineteen summer school. Number twelve, approve driver's education salaries. Members, do I hear a motion to approve the consil agenda as read?
I would like to pull number eight. I want to get somebody on the spot to understand this a little bit more.
Mike Jones, I'm the high school teacher at the high school. This year, we started something new. It's called World Food Prize. It's open to any high school student and within our state, it's right by Purdue University. Students, there is a website. Every student in my fifth hour intro class, it was pretty much all freshmen that we're starting out with this year, they had to pick a country that has a very severe problem with food insecurity. Once they picked their country, they had to do research on it. Every student in my class wrote a two-page paper on the problems in that country and why they are food insecure. Very simply, we do a lot of, here in America, we try to raise food to send to other countries, things of that sort. My students were focusing on what in that country is the problem and how do we solve it? Okay? So those countries are not dependent upon other countries to help them. Okay? And it ranges from everything from jobs to healthcare, to education, all of those things. So we have, like I said, every student in the class had to write a two-page paper. And then I gave the option to any of those kids in there, if they wanted to go more in-depth with that paper and write about the problem and their solution, that they could do that. We had a few kids do that. We had two of them that were submitted. If you're not the school board meeting, you better get there and yell. We had two students who submitted their paper to Purdue University and are selected to go down to the World Food Prize at Purdue in here in a couple of weeks. Takes place on a Thursday evening. They bring in people from, the majority of them are from the Food Science Department at Purdue University to go over. Our kids are going to have, our two students that are going to have to do a presentation on the country that they picked, the problem, and what they came up with their solution for. I just talked to Mr. Bowers, he's the one that introduced it to me. He said that I think that there was around eighty papers submitted. And the top ten of those will get selected in to go to the National World Food Prize in Iowa. I think that's in the beginning of the fall semester. So we have, like I said, we have two students, that is Mallory Bowers and Sarah Kelly. They both went through Mentone here, that are freshmen that are trying it out. So my twenty years of teaching, this is one of the most intriguing, exciting things that I think I've ever done in class. The kids at the beginning were kind of wishy-washy about it. But once they got into it, I think they really got onto it, really to it.
That's fantastic. I appreciate the opportunity. This is new experience.
Yeah. One other thing I'll add is, they do their presentations on Thursday night. They spend the night there, and then the next following day, they spend the entire day on Purdue's campus, mostly in their food research facilities. Purdue University has had three Nobel Food Prize winners. They're going to meet with some of those people and talk to them. So they're going to see the upper echelon people of the food industry here in the United States and people they can talk to. Thank you.
All right, will we have a motion to approve the consil agenda as read? Do I have a second?
I'll say it. Thanks, Andrew. Is there any further discussion?
All payers, state by saying aye. All opposed, state by saying no. We will move on to approval of claims and payroll.
We have one pre-written claim listing this evening dated March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The amount was six hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars, ninety-four cents. Our regular claim listing is dated April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, in the sum of one hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars, seventy-six cents. We have three payrolls this evening dated March eighth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of three hundred eight thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars, and seventy-one cents. March twenty-second, the first payroll is a regular payroll. March twenty-second is also a regular payroll. Two thousand nineteen, in the amount of four hundred two thousand, seven hundred five dollars, and thirty-six cents. And March twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen payroll is an E C A payroll, in the amount of seventy-five thousand, ninety-six dollars, sixteen cents. I submit these claims and payrolls for your approval.
Thanks, Mike. Do I hear a motion to approve claims and payroll for this month?
I'll make the motion to approve the claims and payroll. Do I hear a second?
Is there any further discussion of claims and payroll proceeding? All payers, state by saying aye. All opposed, state by saying no. Motion here, is this a on the financial report?
The school board has provided a reconciled bank statement and monthly financial report of funds per month of March two thousand nineteen. In summary, our receipts and disbursements for March two thousand nineteen are: Total receipts for all funds, one million, four hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars, and ninety-five cents. Total disbursements for all funds, one million, five hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars, and forty-six cents. Financial report.
We love the whole business. Do I want approval of school board policy changes, section two?
I had provided the board last month with some changes within the policy of section two. We're taking all of the assistant superintendents as that recognition within all of our policy out. As we go through section by section, we reorder the moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, roll call, coming for meetings within section two point four. Within section two point five, we revised and concluded the Indiana School Boards Association Conference. Within that part, taken out the National School Boards Association, or the American Association of School Administrators National Conference, taking that out of policy. In two point seven, we've taken more central association of colleges and schools. That has been renamed to Advance Ed. We've added the Indiana Small and Rural Schools Association, Indiana Association of School Business Officials, as organizations that we belong to. Our legal counsel is Louis Kappas, who's now with Kenny Evans, that's been revised. And then pulled out a per diem for attendees, school board members, special needs. That compensation is, will be no longer. We've also talked about and pulled out or changed, excuse me, the complimentary tickets for the sectional front two per individual to one. And we've updated the change man on board docs as it's currently updated. Those were the submissions that I would ask for your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the changes? Do I hear a second? All payers, state by saying aye. All opposed, state by saying no.
Number two, our administrators had provided updated student handbooks, staff athletic handbooks from two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. We're going to go back to your approval at this point. Those are at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels.
Do I hear a motion for approval of the new books?
Adam, I would like to pull the T P H S student handbook, just to review the next one.
So are we going to table the entire number two on that? The whole business for next month?
Just, as far as I'm concerned, just the T P H S.
And we'd approve the rest of them. Okay, we can do that. All right, so we will table the high school handbook, and we will pass your motion for... and we will pass for a motion for the review of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the review.
Do I hear your second? All payers, stay by saying aye. All opposed, stay by saying no. New business, except for the following donations.
Kathy Olson gave an update. Donors choose for the rest of the year, the central box items. So I would ask that you formally accept those donations.
Do I hear your second?
I'll second that out, thanks.
All payers, stay by saying aye. All opposed, stay by saying no. Number two?
Looking at proposing these changes within the school board policy handbook in section three, eliminating the national meetings section and changing that to the state conference, Indiana Public School Superintendent's Association State Conference, Indiana School Boards Association State Conference each year. Within that, we talked about changing the complimentary tickets from two to one for activities or events that come from the athletic department. Also looking at our corporation credit cards. We currently have two credit cards. One is in my name, one is in Jessica McFarland's name, Corporation Treasurer. Or I'm sorry, Todd Glenn is the second one. We have a third card now, I have the Corporation Treasurer's name. That is signed out by administrators or staff members. We've changed the language here to include all three of us in terms of the approval process and how expenditures are received back then. So I provided the updated information there. I pulled out the assistant superintendent section there. Within the credit card portion also. So those are, those are questions that, if you have any questions on that, we'll talk about those. Within physicals, there was a mandatory statute in there for administrators to have a physical and that, that has to be changed. It's an option for administrators, no cost to the administrator. Within section 3.2, that was all for the assistant superintendents. So we've eliminated that entire section. And then these next three sections are for principals, assistant principals, and the athletic director. And that once again deals with the complimentary tickets going from two to one. And then the correction would be the physicals that are offered to administrators. So those are the, as we go section by section here through this year. This is section three that I'm asking you to review for this month. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Blaine. Well, I think that is all we have this evening, so we will adjourn and eat cake.